I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, motion by Lynn, second by Matt. Any further discussion? Any hearing? None? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, the agenda is approved. That moves us to the consent agenda, which is item number four. Any questions on A, B, C, or D on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
So, motion by Lynn, second by Robyn. Any further discussion on that? Any hearing? None? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The consent agenda is approved. First order of business, tonight is a presentation from Jay Femright, who is the coach of our First Robotics team. And he is here to provide, oh, with some team members, it looks like, to provide an update on our very successful robotics program. So, thanks for being here tonight. We can't wait to hear about your success.
Hey, John.
Yeah. So, there's some of the team here. Some of them are still coming. There was a miscommunication of the timing for us. But, yeah, I'm Daniel. I am the co-captain, along with Colin. I do a lot of the engineering and CNC work on the team.
I'm Finn. I'm a first-year high schooler this year. I'm in that grade. I do the media and outreach.
My name is Colin Lane. I'm a junior, and I am the programming lead and also the co-captain.
Oh, good.
So, how many people on the team?
This year, we had, or last season, we had eight students on the team.
Eight students. Ninth through 12th?
What?
Were they ninth grade through 12th grade?
Oh, we do anywhere from seventh to 12th.
Seventh to 12th. Okay, okay.
Robots here.
All right. So, yeah, back in 2024, we had only four students. Because the year before that, in 2023, we had seven seniors, so they all graduated. Yes, we doubled the team last year. We did a lot of outreach programs this summer. And currently, I think we have 13 students, but we're hoping to have anywhere from 15 to possibly 20 students in the team.
That's great.
Is there a limit on how many you could have on a team?
Nope. The only limit is like how much it costs to bring students to events and stuff, like hotels and stuff. But we actually have a pretty small team compared to a lot of teams. There's a lot of big teams like Becker and stuff that'll have like 30-plus students every year. So, this is our robot from the 2025 season. So, each year, we get a different game that we have to build a robot for. We just build this robot in six months. And then, we basically compete with it. We have two regional events. Last year, we did one in St. Cloud, which is kind of our hometown event. And then, we did one down in Wisconsin.
Seven Rivers.
Yep. Yep, that was the Seven Rivers Regional in lacrosse. So, the first one was the lacrosse regional. We ended up winning that one. We ranked first. And then, we went undefeated through playoffs and won that. There's about like 45 teams there. And then, the second one, which is two weeks later in St. Cloud, we ranked fourth in that one, got picked by the First Alliance, and we also won that one. So, yeah, that qualified us for the world championship down in Houston, Texas. So, that's about probably 600 teams go to that.
He took care of you.
Yep, we competed at the world championship down in Houston, Texas. That was like two weeks later than the St. Cloud event. We ended up ranking third in our division, and there's about 75 teams in the division. And then, we lost in playoffs, so we didn't get to like the top spot, but we ended up winning the quality award.
So, you said you have to build a new robot every year. What did this robot have to do?
So, this robot actually has to, there's two kind of like game pieces. One is this big ball, and the other is this little PVC pipe. Each year, there's kind of a theme to the game, so this year was called ReefScape. It's kind of water ocean theme. So, the big ball was called the algae, and the little PVC pipe was called the coral. And you had to basically score it in different locations. The game is a 3v3, so there's three robots on each side. Every high school just makes one robot, so there's basically six high schools in every match. You have qualification matches, which is basically determines your rankings for the day. That goes for, like the traditional event is three days, so you have two days of qualification, one day of playoffs. Once you get into playoffs, if you lose, you're out. So, that's kind of determining the winner of the whole event.
Okay, so walk me through like the supplies on how you build this robot. Not like, not necessarily the mechanics of how you build it, but like, does everybody, is there a list of like approved supplies? Or you have like a budget? Like, how does everybody have to start on the same playing field? You know, how does that work?
So, basically, at the start of the season, we'll watch a video that explains the game and how it works.
Okay.
And then, with that, there's also a game manual that has like all the rules.
Okay.
And based off that, there's a bunch of like dimensions, weight, and all that, and there's like illegal objects you can't use.
Right.
And other than that, a lot of it is just budget. So, what we have the budget for. We could get a lot of fancier equipment, but if that's not in our budget, we can't do that.
If you guys want to watch the extra playing video to kind of see what the game.
This is what we would have gotten here last January.
At the start of the year, they'll basically release this video explaining the game.
Welcome to the 2025 First Robotics Competition Game, ReefScape, presented by HOS. Two alliances of three teams each compete to earn points by harvesting algae, seeding coral on their reef, and returning to their barge to ascend to the ocean's surface. Alliances earn additional rewards for meeting specific scoring thresholds and for cooperating with their opponents. Prior to the start of the match, teams can choose to hang a shallow cage or a deep cage on their barge. Robots start each match at their starting line and may be preloaded with one coral. During the first 15 seconds of the match, robots are autonomous and can be programmed to leave the starting line, remove algae from their reef, and place coral on their reef. If all enabled robots on an alliance lead the starting line and score at least one coral in auto, the alliance earns the auto ranking point. During the following two minutes and 15 seconds of the match, drivers control their robot. Robots can place algae in their net and collect coral from human players at their coral station to place on their reef. Coral placed higher on the reef are worth more points. If an alliance can score enough coral on all four levels, they will earn an additional ranking point. Robots can also deliver algae to their processor. Once processed, the algae can be taken by the opposing human player and scored into the net. When two algae are delivered to each processor, both alliances earn a co-op point. The co-op point reduces the number of coral needed on the reef to earn the ranking point and influences a team's rank in the tournament. As time runs out, robots race back to their barge to hang on their cage and ascend to the ocean's surface. Points are awarded to robots that can hang on a shallow cage, and even more points are awarded to robots that can hang on a deep cage. An alliance that scores enough barge points will earn the barge ranking point. The alliance that earns the most points overall wins the match.
So, as I saw there, each game has multiple different challenges and even a human aspect that is incorporated. So, one of the big ones there was the climbing. You have to climb on a cage that's only about two inches off the ground. And you can, Daniel, do you want to explain how our robot does that?
So, that aspect of the game was harder than traditional years. So, we have this latch mechanism. This deploys out of our robot using gas shocks. And then, we have a winch here, so the bar of the cage will go in here, and then it will pull it up and lift the 115-pound robot off the ground, which is pretty impressive. You guys have any questions about the game?
I mean, a lot, but we don't know. Just a really complicated scoring system.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
It gets worse, actually.
It gets worse. Okay, all right.
You guys want to explain ranking quick?
So, basically, there's two separate sections during a competition. There is the ranking section, which your entire goal during the match is to get as many ranking points as possible. If you heard them mention, there's different ways you get ranking points. One of them is getting a certain amount of coral, or a certain amount of algae, or climbing. Basically, the amount of ranking points you get is averaged, and whoever has the most ranking points becomes the first, second, third, and it goes down. And then, alliance selection. So, the first top four teams basically get to go from the list of all the different high schools and teams. They get to pick three different teams, and that's an alliance. So, then, they go into finals, or they go into the.
Playoffs.
Playoffs. So, then, those four teams are going to compete to win. And then, during that section, all you care about is points, getting as many points in the match.
It's like it starts over with the double elimination.
Okay. So, on the video, they showed like multiple robots on the field, if you will, at the same time. Is that how it is? Are you crashing into each other?
Yes.
That's why they have bumpers.
There's a three, there's a three high schools.
Do you race it?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, what's the speed?
Colin?
I have no clue.
Are your ranges right around 16 feet per second?
I mean, change direction on a dime, just snap a finger through one of different directions.
Can you show them, just show them the drive train?
Sure we can.
Just put that on. It's hard to imagine unless you've looked at it.
So, we don't have like traditional wheels, like you would think, like a car. These wheels can rotate 360 degrees this way to drive, but they can also go 360 degrees this way. So, your robot can be moving in any direction and turning in any direction.
So, it can spin while moving.
Yeah.
Depending on the game, the last year's game, there's a lot more cross-field action, and so, there's a lot more crashing into each other, you know, along the way. So, this year, there's a little bit, it's a little bit different style of game. There's always the three robots. They do go across, one robot can go across to play defense, but otherwise, they stay and their scoring points are their own side.
So, like, who's driving this thing? Is everyone yelling at you?
Yes.
How's that? How's this like? It sounds intense.
So, I'm the main driver, so I actually control the movement of the robot. But then, because there's so many like pieces to it, you can also have an operator. So, they can have any way of like manipulating it. So, he has a button board, and each button like does a certain thing. And then, we also have a drive coach, so this can be like someone that like analyzes.
Backseat driver.
Yeah, like analyzes the whole game, keeps track of like all the time and stuff.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of pieces to it. There's also a human player that like drops the stuff into the robot. So, there's four people that are like doing stuff on the field, basically.
That's just your drive team.
And then, per team, so times three on each side.
Correct.
Yeah.
And usually, some, one of the coaches with a strong personality will take over the alliance coach. So, you're actually overseeing the other coaches too. And so, the idea here is to work together, you know, with the other. So, we will work out strategy before each match with the two teams we're with. And that includes going through data, scouting the teams that we're with and against. And so, we will have a set of.
So, you watch film, kind of?
We do watch.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Film, good stats. And then, often, robots are being worked on all the time. So, before the matches start, we'll send around students to interview teams to see what, even though we watched film from their last event, they may have added something, or maybe they broke. We don't know.
But robotics has just as much strategy, if not more, than other traditional sports like football and stuff. So, I'm one of the strategy leads, so I'll go around with a little clipboard of the field on it, and I'll go around to the teams we're playing with and the teams we're against, and see what everybody's doing and stuff, see what pairs nicely with other robots.
And so, every year, the game is different, so then, how do you, when you find out what the game is, how do you start the whole process to know what you're going to build and how it's going to work?
Yes, the first way we analyze the game is we figure out kind of what's worth the most points, what's going to give us the highest advantage over other teams. That also includes things for like ranking points, because we want to rank high during the competition. And then, once we kind of have our design figured out, that's just like drawing on whiteboards and paper and stuff, then we go into the computer, and we actually design it in the computer using computer aided design.
Like CAD, CAD pad?
Yeah. And then, through a series of manufacturing, we have a lot of CNC work on our robot, so like aluminum manufacturing, polycarb manufacturing.
3D printed.
Yep, 3D printing. We create this robot in the remaining like four weeks. There's a lot of iterations that happen as well, so everything doesn't work on the first try. So, we try to, we try to get it right, but that's definitely not how it ends up. So, we have to remake mechanisms that don't work, or if they work, but they're slow, we want to make it faster.
One of the goals is to fail fast. If it's not going to work, we want to know, we want to know about it quickly, so we can, we can change, change direction.
The idea is to make prototypes, fail, make another prototype.
Yeah.
And then, at some point, you just have to punt, right? Get it to work. You run out of time. It comes to the financial aspect of this. You guys do primarily your own fundraising on your own, right? Oh, yep. We spend a lot of money on a robot.
So, what happens to the robot at the end of the season?
We'll harvest the good parts out of it and then set the carcass on a shelf.
Do you ever build your robot based on last year's model, knowing what worked and what didn't? Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at past robots and even past robots of other teams, just to see what works for similar game pieces.
If you look at the engineering design cycle, that research section, we actually hit that pretty hard. There's actually several, one thing we do is we collaborate with other teams. And a lot of the other coaches kind of specialize in certain parts of the game. And one coach is really good at keeping the history of every game from the beginning, keeps the statistics of the game pieces, the weights and everything. And he'll be a jumpstart at St. Cloud State, and he'll do a presentation, and he'll say, you know, statistically speaking, it's going to be a ball, or it's going to be an odd-shaped item. He's really good at this. He's never right, but, you know, he's good at coming up with ideas. And then, what that helps with is, let's say, it does happen to be a ball in 2026. He will, then in his presentation, you go back and watch it on YouTube, and he'll tell you what years balls were used. So, then you can go through and look at the top teams from those years at their championships to see what manipulators they used.
So, I do this a lot with my kids. I do highs and lows. So, like, if you could describe kind of like your, your best moment in the sport of robotics, and then also a low. When, when was the time that you were really challenged and how'd you overcome it?
For me, I have been in VEX Robotics before this for five years, and this will be my third year on FIRST. And this season was definitely the best out of all of them. Probably the highest part was going to the world championship, just seeing 600 of the best teams around me. And then, we ended up ranking third, which is like crazy. And the low is probably losing then, not making it as hard. Still making it that.
To a broken wire of all things.
Yeah, a broken wire.
They're wiring it on the way to the field.
Yeah, so, yeah, the robot completely broke and couldn't drive. That's why we lost.
That's a low.
The single wire just fell out.
So, that, you know, when you talk about team membership and the importance, you know, if, if, maybe we're missing the one kid who really is into wiring.
Right, right?
I don't know.
Wow.
Yeah, so, this will be my third year on robotics. A high for me would probably be just winning our team's first blue banner, like.
The blue banner is from a regional win, so we never won the regional before, and we did twice this year.
Yeah, just kind of that's like a big moment, just not only for me, but the team in general. And then, ooh, a low would probably be the first year I was in it, when it was just the four of us. Well, we placed really, did really well at Iowa, and then it was just got on number one alliance and just couldn't do it. Got really close, but.
My number one is probably, I got a lot of compliments at Seven Rivers. Because a lot of teams use cameras on their robot, there are like QR codes all across the field, and a lot of teams program it, so their robot kind of like drives itself, so they don't really have to do anything. We don't do that, so it's all manual.
Yeah.
And a lot of teams were surprised by that.
I think definitely my high this year is, it's always really stressful during the build season, because like you want to get your robot done, you want it to be good. So, especially after the CAD and just thinking about it, everything is skeptical at that point. Everything is just a theory, but every, seeing it actually come together and be a real functioning robot is really, really fun to see. And the lows is probably everything breaking and not working.
I was in VEX two years in grade school, and then this is going on my second year at FIRST. So, I think probably the high was Seven Rivers, because that was my first actual competition. So, I think that that was just really fun, and actually being able to go around and look what other people made. And then, the strategy, a little bit aspect of it, and then the lows, probably losing worlds.
We were to world in VEX and FIRST, yourself to himself. Two different, totally different experiences, but both very big.
Yeah, it's awesome, you guys.
Is there time for a parent perspective?
Sure, yeah, as a low, let's, let's hear it.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for letting us roll in kind of late. There was a miscommunication at the time. And I had like a paper printed up, as you know, while I could be prepared, but I left that behind. And my husband sent me a blurry picture of my remarks. So, I'm Tessa Mahoney Benito's mom. Tessa Mahoney became interested, I think, when Colin started inviting him along to robotics tournaments in like the spring of ninth grade. In the 10th grade, Tessa Mahoney officially joined robotics. He's a junior now, and he's working down at the haunted house. But when he came home and said he was interested in robotics, I was, you know, I am a liberal arts person, so I thought. Yeah, I was like, oh, good, that sounds all sciency and stuff.
No science, it's scary, you know?
And I mean, if you asked me, what was robotics truly, like, I would have pictured like, like, there's some nice people around a table, some laptops, and maybe soldering some wires, and maybe they're building a little, you know, a fat bot. I don't, I have no earthly idea. And if you had told me that less than one year later, I would be spending back-to-back-to-back days in a stadium in Houston, 10-hour days on the narrowest bleachers ever invented with eight competition, eight, right? Eight fields. Eight fields going on simultaneously, that is six robots per field. You can't see the ends of these fields, and there's music, and there's lights. It's kind of like the Super Bowl meets a rave meets the old ham pigs.
I haven't been to any of those. Not following.
I can imagine it.
Let's imagine it, let's imagine it.
I, I mean, I don't know anything about psychedelics, but if I did, maybe it's like that. I don't know. It's, the, the culture is extraordinary. I didn't picture myself icing my back for the next month and going to physical therapy, but enough about my back and the stadium seats. But I want to tell you, these young men and women, yes, women too. They're so modest, and I imagined how tonight was going to go. And like, you guys are the best, but these are not kids, or even coaches, I would say, that are going to brag about themselves. So, me being like new to this, let me just brag on them a little bit in our district. Here's what I want you to hear from me. Our team from a public school in rural Minnesota, they were not just watching this event at Worlds, they were in it. You guys, they were absolutely in it. I mean, third in division is amazing, but if it were not for a wire, they were positioned to go all the way, all the way. There are teams so much bigger than them, teams that are so much better funded than them. These young men, and now women, sorry, I get emotional. It's, this is really impactful. They built, get to build alliances to win. They built alliances with well-funded teams from Silicon Valley. They built alliances with teams from Mexico, from India. They built alliances with teams that had huge annual grant funding that sustains them. They built alliances with teams bigger than ours, and I hope, I wish that like every person in the district could know just what a point of pride this program is. This is putting billboard on every edge of your town, point of pride. Like, when I was a kid, and your basketball team would win the championships, you know? But this is Worlds. I mean, this isn't, they killed it at their regions, which is many states. They went to Worlds and collaborated with the best teams on the planet. And what I would tell you is that the First Robotics program, yeah, like the robot's really cool, and winning is really cool. And my son actually like finding where he fits, and then he wants to go study engineering now, you know, that's really cool. But what I want to tell you that impresses me the most is it's how this operation runs. There is, there are no small jobs in First Robotics. You could be the kid who doesn't build the robot, but you're in the stands, and you're scouting, and you're doing data analysis, and boom, you have an epiphany. And you know this long-legged kid I'm talking about? How about a case of truth?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's going to like bow down to the pits, and he's going to get that information, right? And you guys are going to do something with it, and that's going to affect the alliance that you choose and whether you win. And there could be another kid who's never on the field, rarely, but he sits in the pit studiously between every single round. He is making sure the wires are seated well, that things are charging the way they need to charge. As we grow, I can imagine that we will have students who find out that their thing is being a team photographer or the social media manager. Another student might choose to become involved in the business aspect of it. Another student might choose to be involved teaching classes for elementary kids. You don't have to be STEM, you know, for lack of a better word. You can be me, you can be a liberal arts kind of wired person, and find your place, and know that your role is just as important as the role of the drive team. I think that's what I'm, what I'm here to tell you is like, I was just so proud of their accomplishments, but more than what they won is how they do it. There is a place, I think you could take any kid in this district, that's a bold, bold statement. There could be a place for them on this team. They could find their niche on this team, and they would have coaches, coaches and mentors who aren't here, who would really work closely with them to find their, their niche. And if you want to come to like a tournament, not just Worlds, come to any tournament. Like, you can sit right next to me, and I'll bring you ice packs. And, and I'd be poofing and all the things. It's extraordinarily fun to come to these competitions. And what, I want to say they're not learning how to be good humans, like, they're demonstrating how to be good humans through this program.
St. Cloud having their competition again this year? Yep. When you guys, when you go email me, and I'll make sure I send you a cheat sheet, so you can understand what we're doing.
March 26th through April, what, 2nd, end of March.
Yeah, we'll be doing to that one in week six.
Right before Worlds.
And we're defending champions from last year.
And we're defending champions from last year.
Okay.
And you guys did your conference championship?
Oh, yeah, just the other weekend, um, we had the annual conference championship, so all the teams around the area come and just play robots for a day. Um, and we ended up winning that, um, we won that as well last year, and we got second place back in twenty twenty three.
And they still, they've been, the it, the Central Minnesota Conference Championship has existed for three years.
We got second the first year, then won the other.
Um, our conference, uh, we work directly, one, one of, this is one of the things I really like about this program too, is we directly work with our conference teams. Um, so in the sixth week of of the build, every Friday, we will meet at various schools with everyone in our conference and compare notes, so you know, maybe we're gonna do a certain drive trainer, a certain manipulator, all the, all the co- coaches and mentors in one room, all the students in the other. And then uh the kids, the students work together, and they talk about their ideas, what worked, what didn't that week do for? We collaborate, so if you were to, you know, compare that to say with football, it'd be like bringing your playbook with all of your teams you're competing against, and laying them all on the table and comparing them, and you know, and saying you should run this play after that play. We're all working to elevate um the engineering automation here. And in the Midwest, um, United States, you know, we're all here to work together. There's also websites like Delfi, where all the teams around the world are always helping each other. If you ever have a question, you can punch it in, and some guy from MIT or Caltech will jump on and answer your questions, it's really cool. And our main programming school is Worcester Polytechnic Institute, they do, they're all the background, so if there's any questions on that, there's mentors for that.
I think on top of collaborating with the other teams too while you're building, as you're competing, if these guys break and don't have a part, other teams will get their parts. Because they're competing against them in the next match, and these other teams will share parts. So it's like nobody's like totally, you're you're, you're competing against each other, but you're also working together so that everybody has a good chance. Breaking, breaking down in a match and then missing your next one because of a part, it's like these other teams just think that that's not fair.
The theme is gracious professionalism, and so that's the theme that resonates with all those students, mentors, coaches.
Um, to your question, Matt, of our budget, we have about a third of our budget um goes to the robot build itself. Um, another third is travel expenses during the season, and then another third actually just goes to Worlds, um, just to get everybody down to Houston, so.
Sure.
Um, so that's kind of a breakdown. Um, and um, uh, this district has been awesome in helping us out with the um art transportation costs with, you know, providing the vehicles and and fuel, and we need it for the local, for when we're driving locally, that's awesome, thank you, and um we have um the Recore Tech Center.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. We had an open house, we had over a hundred people there. Um, it was, we could tell that there's this energy that's following that, and we're just, we're so um grateful and honored to be there and to be showcasing not only Recore Robotics, but also, you know, innovation and technology at Recore and what it can really look like. Um, Binary Battalion is another big team, a huge team, um compared to us down in um St. Michael, Albertville. They are looking at now another space as well, so this is, this is, you'll be, we're gonna watch this kind of, you know, really take off here. Um, as as schools and teams figure out that, hey, this is, this is a partnership that really works, and um, so yeah, it's it's.
And Becker built their brick.
Yep. Becker's been in theirs for about a year now, so yeah, so this is, it's happening, so yeah, it's, it's awesome to be, to be united um here at Recore, so.
Yeah, so the 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 trend across the United States is to put in something the size of a gymnasium or um science, technology, you know, the whole STEM. And um then often they'll have a whole field set up there permanently throughout the year. You know, in our space, we have a quarter of a field in one corner, which is great, more than we ever had, so.
Imagine basketball practicing, and they have to set up the hoop and set up the court and stuff. They're only getting a quarter of it, a quarter of the court, each practice, they gotta set it up and then take it back down.
Yep.
That's what they let them use, yeah.
So yeah, we we go in and um, yeah, imagine a quarter of a field, so you you would just practice plays back and forth on one quarter of the field. Um, and then uh when, the only time you get to play on a real field is when you have an. That's what we're doing.
And I know at a world competition last year, this is probably the smallest team that probably went to Worlds.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, and the second thing too is that, you know, we're, we will probably double in size, yeah, or double in size for the second year in a row. So we started with four, two years ago with four, last year we had eight. We have our registration meeting um tomorrow night, and we're looking at another eight, nine students coming in.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
That was one of my questions, is if you ended up expanding, uh, do you ever have two robots going per team, or is it always one per?
One per high school.
Okay, for high school, okay.
It would be like, I mean, some schools have done like a B squad.
Okay.
Um, but Sartell, Sartell started doing that, it really doesn't work out as well as you would think it would, because of the cost of registration is so high.
Sure.
You're almost, I mean, some of the teams have eighty kits, and that's fine. Um, they break it down into departments, so you have, they start bifurcating it, you have your robot side, non-robot side. And you go robot side, you break that down into the different departments. You know, and your non-robot, you might have marketing, business, accounting, just break it all down. And then they start putting people, and they actually have job, trying to get interview for a job. You have to apply to the team, and you look at where, where your interests are, and they interview each student, and they go through the whole process.
Instead, we have eight students that each have four jobs, so.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming.
How did you become the driver?
Oh, sorry.
I was the oldest two years ago, so I think I just.
The most experienced, yeah. There you go.
You know, this, and as as a coach, I always, I tell them, I said, as soon as, keep telling them, as soon as someone's faster or better than him, he's fired. Cause I don't care what your last name is.
Yeah, this is cutthroat.
The conversation was back in twenty twenty four, who doesn't want to be the driver?
Right, yeah, I know.
Question, does the robot get a name, or?
Yes.
What's his name?
Yeah, you guys have it on the back? It's Great Duck.
It's Great Duck.
We're from Minnesota.
Yeah. So it was, it was really fun to take that down to Houston, then we had tons of test teams were asking us like, what, what's with the robot name, so.
Duck Duck Great Duck.
Yeah, they got.
When they announced them, it was Duck Duck Great Duck.
And then we did Great Duck, yeah.
Everybody in the crowd and hollering.
Yeah, that's awesome.
You guys have any questions for us?
Not anymore. Thank you very much for being here and for your contributions to the Recore Schools, appreciate it.
And if you could send out your schedule, so if we could make it to any of them, we'd love that.
Yeah.
I'd love to watch.
You can always go to recorero robotics dot com, we'll have our stuff on there.
What is it?
Recore Robotics.
Oh, recorero robotics dot com, easy.
I would suggest if you, I mean, you can watch it on a live stream, but if you can go to St. Cloud and actually walk around that place, you really get, yeah, you really get a feel.
The energy of it, yeah, for sure.
All the difference.
Or as the kids say, the vibe.
Yeah. The live stream is a way just to keep up with what's going on, but it is not like watching it, it's hard. You can't actually see the robots driving, and you basically just keep up to the story.
You can feel the hit when they run into each other. Um, the other thing is St. Cloud is not a full event, it, there's not enough room in that for that facility to have a full event of teams. So when you go there, it's a partial, it's probably like a five-eighths or three-quarter amount of teams. So just keep that in mind, that the room is just not big enough to put a field with all the people. And they have, there's certain, there's rules, First Robotics has rules, so if you have this many X amount of seeds, then they have a formula, and this is how many teams can be there, that's it. Thank you so much for having us.
Yes, thanks for being here, have a great season.
Thank you.
All right, um, that moves us along to the next topic is discussion items. Um, and the first, first item of the discussion is the Minnesota paid leave law. Kevin, if you want to just walk us through that?
So um you probably have heard about the Minnesota paid leave that takes or begins on January one, twenty twenty six. And uh what this is, is this is a paid leave for people for health uh care issues or family care. So they they can take up to twenty weeks of combined uh leave, but it is primarily a twelve-week paid leave. Uh, this is funded through a payroll deduction, so every employee now will have another payroll deduction of point four-four percent. The school district pays the other point four-four percent, cause that's what the state has allocated. So for the school district, that's an increase of about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars um that that we have to come up with, so it is an added expense, and uh people will see a little bit smaller paycheck um that comes about of that, so um we've been working to get the communication out and getting things in line for that. Um, there's some things we're still learning and still trying to figure out a little bit. Um, so we're, we're, we'll see, I think there'll be a little bit of growth as we go through this, I, and um but uh in some ways, well, in uh, I mean, there are some really positive things to add protection for workers. Uh, we do have accumulated sick leave, but sometimes young people have babies and they just don't, they're not able to build that up, so I think there's some really good things there. Um, so we'll see how this all plays out, but I think I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware and knowing that we got some other things, and this is, this is gonna be taking place, so. Working on it, and we're trying to get things ready to go for January, January one start, um, if anybody needs it, so.
Yeah, and I did think, I think you had answered this for me previously, but the paid leave is not paid at a hundred percent, right? It's at a percentage of income?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a percentage of your income, so the lower your income, the higher the percentage, the higher your income, lesser percentage.
It's like a sliding scale, sort of.
We kind of look at it like unemployment or workman's comp, it's it's paid, uh, it's not paid by the school district, we pay in. So when someone takes paid family leave, they actually aren't getting paid, they're not working, so we don't pay, they don't take their sick leave, so um, so it's really more of a state-funded and state-paid uh program that that goes on, so.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone on that? Okay, I don't have any, so uh we'll move forward then to the superintendent report.
Um, I had a couple of things, uh, one was there's a Stearns County survey of parents and guardians. Uh, the county is looking to get some information from families on what some of the needs are. It's kind of unusual that, I mean, they they ask the school to pass things on, uh, just maybe a couple of things about that. In the past, um, directory information of parents was, it was directory information, so they could ask for parents' addresses, and we would give that to them, they changed the law, so now they can't, so it kind of in a, in a way just said, can you help us out and send this stuff out to the parents? I just wanted to, you know, let the board know that what this was, um, it's not taken by students, it is actually, and it's not mandatory.
I took the survey.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I took it, um, it just asked a lot about, um, it wasn't, didn't take very long, it just multiple choice answers about just like services, are you having trouble paying your utility bills, have you had to, have you had to make a hard decision between, you know, you know, putting food on the table, or, you know, paying, making your car payment? Do you have reliable daycare? Um, you know, just basic like, just questions about the services that might, that might be provided in Stearns County, and then at the end of the survey, it did, it did say um a copy of, if you put your email address in, I did, I didn't, but if you put your email address in, they will send you a copy of the survey results when they come out in twenty twenty, spring of twenty twenty six, so.
And my understanding is the county is just doing this to figure out what the priorities are.
As a budget.
Yeah, because their budgets have been cut by the federal government and by the state, so it's like, okay, where is the most need, how do we use our money the most efficiently and the most wisely?
So that was.
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody had it, like, I just thought we should talk about it, if there's anybody had an issue with just the distribution of the survey. We won't get any of the answers back.
I know sometimes you get questions if, why are we, we're not doing this survey, I'm just kind of passing it on to the parents.
We're the distributor of it, cause we have access to email addresses for parents. And it's, and I think it's a worthy cause.
Right.
You know, it's just trying to help this, giving the county good information um to make, you know, some hard decisions, so.
Uh, my other uh uh annually resource training and solutions has some uh awards that they provide. And uh here this fall, the Leaders in Education Excellence Award, uh, Recore has been able to nominate three teachers for this, Nate Getter, Brittany Herrick, and Heidi Mouse um have been uh are the Recore nominees. Fantastic teachers.
Right.
So there'll be a banquet on Wednesday at the St. Cloud Convention Center, um, the River Center.
Yep.
And we have schools from the whole region, six, so there's, there's a lot of people there, and they have a a program, and then they they acknowledge these, and they're called up, and they receive an award, so. I just thought it'd be cool to mention that our nominees and and award winners.
Yeah, great.
Very deserving, and and it's nice to have that honor. We also do, uh, in the winter, there is a recognition for support staff, so this is where paraprofessionals, custodians, uh, food service, uh, any secretarial, any of those people, we have nominations we can make for that, and then in the spring, the fun one is the student banquet, where we get to acknowledge uh some of the the top students here from Recore, and they get to go down and be acknowledged in that excellence uh program, so. There's three of them each year, and uh this is the first one for teachers here.
Yeah.
Coming up, so.
Well, congratulations, that's great.
And other than that, I don't uh, we're, I don't know where the time goes, but this is the last week, about over, we're ready to head into November already, so.
Yep.
Um, which means winter sports are gonna start cranking up, uh, we've got most of the fall stuff done, but we've got uh football still going.
Dance has already started.
Dance started, and hockey, I think, is going, so, yep, kind of transition into the winter season, so.
Well, great, that brings us to the budget comparison report, Jason is here to present that today, thanks for coming, Jason.
Yeah, good evening, board. Um, we are through the first quarter of fiscal year twenty six, things are tracking just fine, as as they seem to, month after month here. Um, so for the first quarter, um, the general fund has received about sixteen percent of our annual revenue, similar to last year. Expenses are a little bit under um at this point, but nothing um out of the ordinary there. Um, food services just kind of getting going with with recording of revenue and expenses, we're um about four percent of our annual revenue compared to seven percent the prior year. Um, so we're a little bit running behind, nothing unusual, it's just the timing, you know, when when those payments come in. And then the district spent about six percent of our annual expenses compared to about twelve percent the prior year, so revenue's down, expenses also down at this point. Um, community, community service fund uh is similar, um, uh, we're twenty-nine percent of annual revenue in compared to twenty-seven percent in the prior year. Um, so running a little bit ahead, expenses are about thirty percent compared to twenty-nine prior year, so we're we're right on track uh with our funds, uh, similar results to uh our other areas as well, so I think we're in good shape financially uh through the first quarter. Um, at this point in the year, um, we are almost done with fiscal year twenty-five financials, so we've been working with the auditors. Um, continue just to tie up the final few loose ends with them. Um, and then we're scheduled to meet with them the first week of, um, well, they'll be back on site here in mid-November for a day or two. Um, and then uh meeting to look at our financials with Kevin uh first week of December. Uh, so we expect our financials to go forward to the board for acceptance in uh that December board meeting. Um, at the same time, we do the treatment taxation hearing. Um, so as uh financials finish up for fiscal twenty-five, um, we will then update the five-year financial forecast. Um, so we can start to look at where the, where where the runway is for finances and what that means for our budget as we move into next fiscal year, so. Um, we're just about wrapped up with fiscal twenty-five, so we can start the planning process again moving forward, so. Um, everything's on track with with normal timing, so nothing on the norm there, um, seems like we're in good shape.
Any questions from anyone on the budget?
Can I maybe just link something together, I I should also update you on the HVAC project, so. Uh, most of that now, we've got the system fairly well hooked up, and they are testing it, getting it, you know, they have to do the equalization, so now we end up with a few hotspots here and there, and uh but I don't think we have too many leaks financially that project, we must be, we've.
We're getting there tonight, um, uh, in the consent agenda with the bills, you approved about seven hundred and eighty thousand, I want to say that uh that went on for that HVAC project, and we've got about one point three million left. that went out for that HVAC project and we've got about one point three million left um on that bond. So we're um that was uh seven plus million dollar bond. So we're getting to the end of it as we uh finish closing up those pay applications.
So as they get their final checklist, everything checks off and everything is in order, that's when we start making the final payments to the vet, the contractors that did the work. And I know we have a little, there's one delay on, in the library media center. Some tubing, um that should be here probably in two, three weeks. So they'll, we'll be coming back, taking care of that. But in the meantime, they're, they've got plenty of testing and checking and commissioning that they need to do with the rest of the building. But we do have heat and sometimes it's hot. Hasn't been too cold, but it was before they had the heat on.
Okay.
Uh but no, everything is, everything is uh pretty much wrapping up now, so.
Great. Great, thank you. Thank you. Um we have uh some board committee and representation uh updates for the different committees that we serve on. Uh Robin, do you have a report on any committees you report on?
Uh Buildings and, Buildings and Grounds is meeting on Friday. We haven't met since.
Okay. How about you, Matt?
Just Booster Club. Uh they met, what was the date? On October sixth. Not sure, next Monday or whenever the next meeting is, but really the only thing they proposed were five thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars worth of uh dancing forms and an outdoor P A system for five thousand. And the Booster Club did approve both of those for a total of ten thousand one forty-four and twenty cents. And they paid for a variety of different ways, but that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Um and then I report on technology, which hasn't met um since the last, since the last time I've reported. Um so I'll move over to Lynn, who reports on um negotiations.
And I also wrote a report on the schools advocating for fair funding, which I did not make it to their meeting last Friday. But I do have the documents that they gave out. They had done the state survey by that leather, leatherman group. And so they've got some interesting information in that, talking about, you know, how people feel about what's going on with education and the taxes and I think there's even a question in there on how much extra money people would be interested in or would be okay with paying towards referendums. Um it'd be interesting to see how that would match our district, but statewide, you know, most people want to see a little bit more money going into education. Um and the second report I didn't get through, did you have a chance? That was um Fred Nolan gave a lot of information about.
Fred was talking about equalization. Uh Fred was with M, I think, is he back with M R E A or?
Um, no, I think he's um worked, he does a consultant.
So he was the um uh executive director of the Minnesota Rural Edu- Education Association. And he did a lot with L T F M and the Ag to School Tax Credits for Ag property. And now they've kind of put him on and it must be, I'm getting a sense, he's gonna start helping to advocate for the equalization that we're kind of looking at. I think they had, you know, they needed to get L T F M. They needed to get the Ag to School Tax Credit stuff done. And now Fred is kind of a, he's a former superintendent and fully very knowledgeable.
And he actually was in uh Eaton Valley at one point.
Oh, at Eaton Valley too. I didn't know he was there. Um but uh they're putting him to kind of task on equalization and trying to help the legislature understand what would be a fair process to help schools like ours get a little bit more equalization uh and help us with some of our tax burdens for our local taxpayers.
Yeah, basically, almost all the equalization formulas they put in place, most districts, their property values have kind of grown beyond the levels that they had. So not very many people are getting the equalization anymore. And yet um we kind of need it.
And I think that, you know, it's, it's kind of a, it isn't necessarily, shouldn't say necessarily. I mean, most of its focus is on property tax relief. Um right now, we wouldn't get any more money, but the idea is if you have some property tax relief, you might be able to talk about operating levies, which could generate a little bit more uh revenue. Um so it's kind of one of those. I don't want to say it's, uh the primary focus is property tax relief, but in general, then it might be, how do we access a little bit more revenue that's at a fair way for the taxpayers and not paying such a heavy burden? Does that, that be fair enough?
Yeah, because if you're going out and asking for people to pay more for taxes for a referendum and one district has to, you know, for every hundred dollars we get, our taxpayers are paying, you know, an extra two hundred dollars a month compared to a district in the cities with a lot of property where the taxpayers pay ten bucks a month. It, it, it equalizes that to make it fair for the taxpayers. So, okay, um yeah, I wish I could have gotten to that, but I had a lot going on, so I had to go with the information they sent out. And then negotiations. We met with the paraprofessionals last week, the last week.
Yep, last Wednesday.
Yep, and again, we still have some language items that we were finishing up, but we did get agreement on more of those. They've taken some things off of their list. They've agreed to go with the policy um related to basically harassment, our harassment policy versus putting. Yeah, instead of putting something into the contract about that.
Respect and dignity.
And um we also, let's see, we were able to put the new program into um handbook instead of putting it into the contract.
Paid leave, yeah.
Paid leave.
Yeah.
So we've taken some things off the table, agreed on most of the language things. We're down to money.
Yep.
And they did give us a new proposal that did bring us closer, but we've got a ways to go.
Yep. I think, when do we meet with them again? November third or next Tuesday or?
Monday.
Next Monday before our strategic planning session, we meet with the pairs again.
But uh overall negotiations with him has gone well and we're knocking things off the list as we go, but the tough ones are left, which is usually the, the money. Which leads us to our negotiations today with the teachers and um same situation. We have almost all the language things resolved. They did come with a new proposal tonight for financial. They didn't actually have it costed out when they came, but they are asking for two percent increase, the first year, two percent increase on wages or salary the second year, which puts them at over nine point.
Nine point two.
What was it?
Nine point.
Yeah.
Nine point eight six.
They're nine point eight six. We are at.
Increase eight point.
Eight point one one.
One.
One one or one two.
So it doesn't sound like we're very far apart, but we're.
Yeah, it's still a lot of money.
There's a ways to go.
I mean, Kevin just got done telling us we have another a hundred and ninety thousand dollars we have to come up with for the paid leave.
Yep. So um they proposed tonight that we go to mediation to resolve the financial.
Okay.
We said that if they want to file for mediation, we're okay with that.
Okay.
I think that's pretty well covered. Anything else do you think?
No, I think you covered it well.
Okay.
Kayla, you had mentioned, just thought that everything has been professional.
Very professional, yeah.
Good.
I feel like everyone's acting in good faith and trying to get there. Yep.
Good. Good. Well, thanks for all your extra work on this team. I know it's a lot of extra time. Um and then I have an update for strategic planning. So in addition to negotiations, um we've also been busy working on our uh strategic plan because our current plan right now um uh ends here in the end of twenty twenty-five, which is coming quickly. So we had our strategic planning committee meeting. Um the number two meeting was back on October twentieth. And that was last Monday. Uh we reviewed the environmental scan summary of the crowds, the possibilities and the must-haves for our district going forward. Um we reviewed the stakeholder engagement strengths and opportunities. Again, we asked our community to and our employees uh and our students to participate in a survey. And so those surveys were, results have come back in. They were summarized for us. Um and uh we were, you know, provided some information on strengths and opportunities from that survey. Um we started just brainstorming some uh foundational elements of the strategic plan and some of those things include core values, our district's belief statements, our mission statement. Um again, reviewing and revising our current vision, vision statement and then identifying traits to describe the portrait of a graduate from Recore High School. So, or Recore Schools, I should say. Um so the next steps is we're gonna finalize the core values, belief statement, mission statement, vision statement, and portrait of a graduate traits. And then we'll review a draft goals and objectives for each of those focus areas at our next meeting for strategic planning, which is next Monday, November third at six thirty. So you've heard us, right? There's a four-thirty meeting for pairs. Then there's a six-thirty um strategic planning meeting after that, so.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
We worked Lynn, Kayla and Matt pretty hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Um with that, I, is there any comments or requests from visitors? Okay, so we do not have anybody that signed up today. Um that brings us to our upcoming events, um which is uh teacher negotiation was tonight. We have a board meeting at, at, right now. Um there's a Leaders in Educational Excellence banquet, which is on Wednesday. Building and Grounds are meeting Friday morning um at seven AM. Um strategic planning committee meeting I just mentioned on November third, which will be right after negotiations with the pairs, also on November third. Policy committee meeting on uh November fifth. And then our next school board meeting will be uh November tenth, followed by strategic planning after that board meeting. So there's a lot on the agenda that is happening outside this room, so.
I need to report on Ben Stern's, too.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I thought this would be worthwhile just because we're in negotiations and we did settle with a couple of contracts. Um clerical, we did approve at seven point three seven percent.
Okay.
Custodial was at seven point two percent.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Good information there.
Yeah, Jenna, did you have anything else to report on?
Um, no.
From the committees? Well, she did negotiations. I kind of just moved.
Right, yeah, it's good. No, I had nothing to report, so.
Okay. Okay, very good. I appreciate that. I think we've uh completed all the business we needed to do tonight. So meetings adjourned. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.